Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. It is 9:00 a.m. on Wednesday, December 7th. This is the regular meeting of the Los Angeles City Council's Homelessness and Poverty Committee. We're in a tight timeline this morning, so I am here as the chair. Marquis Aristos, Representative District A, will be joined by at least a couple of members momentarily, but I want to get started with public comment, so we can cover as much of the agenda as possible. Mr. Clerk, do we have general public comment cards? No general public comment cards? Okay. General public comment card, so not on an item, but in general. Okay. So I'm going to begin with item one. Happy to be joined by the erstwhile councilmember Mike Bonin. Councilmember, we're beginning with public comment, so we can get through this agenda before we get kicked out of the room. So our first speakers will be Becky Dennison, Rachel Pedowitz, probably not saying that correctly, Eric McNeven.
Item one.
Item one. I'm sorry, Mr. Clerk, can you read item one into the record?
Yes, sir. Item one is a-
Hold on, Ms. Dennison.
Item one is a CIO report relative to the list of pre-qualified developers for housing development and the disposition recommendation for the eight city-owned properties identified through the Affordable Housing Opportunity Site. This item is also referred to the Entertainment and Facilities and Housing Committees.
Thank you. Morning.
Good morning. I'm Becky Dennison with Venice Community Housing, and we are here in strong support of the item, both because we are one of the selected development teams, but also because the use of city land for permanent supportive housing and affordable housing is a great policy idea and will help to really address the housing and homelessness crisis. So we are honored to be a part of the five development teams before you, and believe that the sites in Venice are most critical, given that the housing and homelessness crisis and the affordability crisis in Venice is amongst the most acute in the city. We do want to just say, for the public record, that we will be engaging in broad community engagement upon council approval. So we have a lot of preliminary ideas for the site, and we have a great development team. You'll probably hear from many of them today. But we will be engaging in community engagement very thoroughly, to make sure that we have a project that can meet the greatest need and also meet the needs of the community as a whole. So thank you very much. I will say there's a couple people in your pile that are coming up, so-
Okay, good.
Good morning. My name's Eric McNeven from Erico and Moss Architects. Our office has been working with Becky and the rest of the development team on the Venice Dell Site. We feel that it's a very important site within the city, both from an architectural and urban point of view, as an opportunity to integrate an undeveloped site in the middle of the Venice community into its surroundings, and also from a social point of view in terms of providing affordable housing on the site. Working with the team, we have a number of interesting ideas that we've already developed as part of the proposal. We know that one of the concerns for the community will be maintaining the public parking that's on the site now. We're confident that we can maintain that and actually grow it to provide more parking on the site, and in addition to the affordable housing and a number of other urban public amenities on the site. It's very early in the process. We know the community will want to be involved. We plan on having a number of opportunities for the community to engage with the design team, and we look forward to working with the community. Thank you.
All right, so we'll close public comment at this time, Mr. Clerk. So any cards that I don't have, we won't have. I have David Ewing, Marie Kennedy, and Erica Lee. Any one of you. There you go.
Hello, I'm Erica Lee. I am a Venice resident, have lived there for two, three years this year, and I am strong support of this project. I think affordable housing in Venice is in dire need. I have a half-mile bike ride to work every day and pass at least 10, 15 homeless residents in the area. I think this presents people with an opportunity and a chance to live their lives, which they don't have without housing, and the only answer to homelessness is housing.
Thank you. Linda Lux, Max Harris, Daniel Whalen.
Good morning. My name is Maxwell Harris. I work for Venice Community Housing. I'm the Director of Housing and Asset Management. Venice Community Housing has been in business for more than 30 years, and it has provided affordable housing in the city of Venice. Venice Community Housing has the compassion, the knowledge, and the know-how to bring affordable housing to Venice. We eagerly await your decision to tap us as a housing provider to help keep affordable housing in Venice. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
My name is Dan Whalen. I'm a registered architect and a 30-year resident of the Oxford Triangle, and I co-authored the 1988 community input for the final city-approved Oxford Triangle specific plan. The Thatcher Yard site being presented by Councilman Bonin as a way to house the homeless people, but as it's currently proposed, it would provide just eight to 15 permanent supportive housing units. This is, in reality, a way to fast-track a large multifamily development that would be landlocked in the middle of a single-family neighborhood, require an inappropriate zoning change, and violate the Oxford Triangle specific plan. Another site located on Manchester has none of these major planning and zoning issues, but was deemed not suitable for development. Housing our homeless has rightly become one of our city's priorities. However, to ensure that we don't create other long-lasting problems for our residents, a more inclusive and transparent process must be enacted. To date, the process has been hastily prepared without the typical community input and without following proper planning, land use, and regulatory procedures. If approved, the Thatcher Yard development will have a profound, long-lasting negative impact on our neighborhood and a very small positive impact on the homeless crisis. I recommend that Thatcher Yard be reconsidered, not for multifamily development, but rather for sale by the city at market value after rezoning to R1.
Tommy Newman, Blake Cottington, Sarah Letts.
Good morning, councilmembers. Tommy Newman, L.A. Family Housing, here in support of the process and in support of our award of the Lakeview Terrace Site. We just want to emphasize that we really view the process thus far as sort of an initial conversation, and that there's a lot of work to do, building consensus, working with the community. What was proposed were concepts and not necessarily what the project will be or should be, and so it's just really crucial to understand this as the very beginning stages of an active conversation that we'll be entering into with the Lakeview Terrace community, Silmar, Pacoima, and everyone around, and we look forward to getting that conversation going with your help today.
Good morning. My name is Blake Cottington. I'm with Thomas Safran and Associates. We're one of the recommended developers for the CD11 site, Thatcher Yard. Just want to say we're very excited to be recommended for this project. We're looking forward to engaging in a very robust and inclusive community engagement process. It's important to us that the community and the city are happy with the project that eventually will be developed. Thank you very much.
Good morning, councilmen. My name is Sarah Letts. I'm the Executive Director of Hollywood Community Housing Corporation. We are really looking forward to partnering again with Venice Community Housing on the site, the Venice Dell Site, and it'll be our second partnership. We recently completed the Gateway Project, which is 20 units of permanent supportive housing in Venice, in Councilman Bonin's district. So thank you for all you've done to date. It's an all-hands-on-deck situation, and we are really looking forward to being part of the solution. And I also want to acknowledge that after the time for submitting a chip for public comment, we had a number of other supporters come in the chambers, so I just wanted to acknowledge that we appreciate all the support from a number of constituents in Venice. Thank you.
I think this is Colleen Sorrow, and Jason Porrest after that, and Diane Fletcher-Hoppy after that.
Good morning. My name's Colleen Sorrow. I'm on the VNC Board and Chair of the Oceanfront Walk Committee through the VNC, but I am speaking as a resident this morning. I support this and look forward to the plans moving forward. I'd like to see if one of the places in Venice could possibly be of mixed use, and if it is, I think that's a really great way for the community to band together. And if it does, I hope it doesn't turn into what happened at Chelsea in New York, where there's a backdoor and a frontdoor policy, so everybody feels like they're one community. So thank you.
Come on up.
Hi, my name is Jason Forrest, and I'm a member of the Oxford Triangle community. I basically wanted to echo Dan Whalen's thoughts with regard to concerns. We're a community of 350 residents. Parking and traffic is already a huge issue. We're concerned what the impact of so many units would be to a small community. I'm supportive of the same R1 situation, where we take the city land, sell it off, turn it into homes, but make it manageable for the community's size. I am absolutely supportive of trying to combat homelessness, but I feel that working with the community and trying to do that, rather than to fast-track it and to do it in a way that feels sneaky, does not seem like the right way. I realize this is preliminary, so I'm going to keep my thoughts to this. Thank you.
Good morning. My name is Diane Fletcher-Hoppy. I've been a resident and property owner of the Oxford Triangle for 32 years. I live across from the Thatcher Yard. Please don't ruin the Oxford Triangle by making it denser and by ruining the scale and the character of a R1 single-family residence neighborhood. High-density housing at the Thatcher Yard will magnify our current gridlock at the intersection of Washington and Lincoln. The city council plan is counterproductive, and the Thatcher Yard property is extremely expensive when they could sell Thatcher Yard for much more money and buy less expensive housing elsewhere. But why should we all be fighting when you could make much better use of the money and help the deserving by giving them housing in an area where more units could be developed and in a community that is much less expensive for them as well?
Hi, my name is Marie Kennedy. I gather that you already called me, but we were parking.
We did. Yes.
I'm a homeowner in Venice. I'm also Chair of the Venice Community Housing Board, and we completely support your plans for housing the homeless, mainly because of the incredible need, but also because Venice has always been a very diverse community, both economically and racially, and that is one of the things that has become really difficult to maintain in Venice. Venice Community Housing is absolutely committed to a very full community outreach. We've already planned a bunch of different house meetings that are going to happen in December and January to really talk about the plans and also to get complete community input on the details of any housing that is built.
Thank you.
Hi there. My name is Rachel Pedowitz. I've lived in the Venice area for two and a half years. I've worked at Animo Venice, which is a high school in Venice, and now I work at Safe Place for Youth, which is a drop-in center for young people facing housing instability in our area. Many of our young people currently work at the shops and restaurants in the Venice area, so they are already a fabric of our community. And so to build this housing to actually allow them to live stably here will be a huge benefit to our broader community as well. Currently, their options are to leave the entire support system that is keeping them afloat and stay homeless, or to stay homeless and keep the supports that they have in this area. So please continue supporting this effort.
Thank you.
Good morning, councilmembers. My name is Linda Lux. You called my name, I understand.
Tell me your name.
Linda Lux. I'm the former president of the Venice Neighborhood Council and a member of the Board of Neighborhood Commissioners. I'm a former president. I've lived in the Venice area since 1970, and I've seen a lot of changes. One of them is the loss of diversity. I think it's brilliant that the city council is considering and putting up city-owned land, which it has a lot of, and making it available to developers like Venice Community Housing, where I work part-time now, to developers who want to build housing for people, not for profit, and to maintain the diversity that has historically been Venice. This is one way to do it. So I really thank you for moving forward with the use of city property. It's the only way that makes it affordable and doable to keep Venice what Venice has always been. Thank you.
Good morning, sir. My name is Mark Ryavec. I'm President of the Venice Stakeholders Association.
You don't have a card, sir.
I arrived at five minutes after, sir.
Stop. You don't have a card. Go to the back of the line. If we have time to get to you, we will.
Thank you. There are no cards. Sir, there are no, there are no cards.
Who, is there anybody in line who we called and they hadn't spoken yet? There's nobody? All right. Where are we on time? 9:16, okay. So we'll do, so we'll do five more minutes of public comment. So Mr. Ryavec, you can come back up. Come on back up. Okay. Okay, so we're going to do five minutes of this because we got to get out of this room. Come on, let's go. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. My name is Mark Ryavec. I'm President of Venice Stakeholders Association. I'm also a candidate against Mr. Bonn and for CD11. I would ask that your committee take both the Venice-Median contract and the Thatcher Yard contract out and hold it in abeyance till after March 7th. I am here representing the wishes of the majority of both the Canals area and the Oxford Triangle, that these projects not go forward at this time and that they be given a proper vetting before the Neighborhood Council and the community be able to talk about the concept of using these properties for the intended use, as opposed to what the specific projects might look like that Mr. Safran or the Venice Community Housing would come up with. Again, I would ask that you pull both of those out till after March 7th, because I certainly would kill both of these projects as they're currently envisioned. Thank you.
My name is Eva Green, and I'm saying no to making Venice a homeless dumping ground. You do not have the consent of the governed, the people of Venice. Those attending the public meetings, 99% were against this plan. The city will only build brick-and-mortar portion of housing. There's no services. That's county-provided. No sober living required. No 24-hour security. No educational training provided. No plan for integration back into society. No path for employment. No incentive for upward mobility. No plan to enforce current sleeping-on-sidewalk laws. Funding and structures for services must come from the same source. You never talked about the cost of each unit at the meetings. They will be close to $500,000 each, and the cost does not include the land costs which you're going to be providing through our hard-earned taxes. With the cost of housing one homeless person in Venice, you could be housing three elsewhere. You're creating a storage of mentally ill and alcoholics because you do not require sober living. Venice is 3 and 1/4 miles, and you want to build four locations, yet no plans from our Vista, where Mr. Bonn and lives, which is 2.9 square miles. No plans for Brentwood, 15.22 square miles. No plans for Pacific Palisades.
Thank you. That's your time. That's your time. You're already speaking without a card. So everybody who spoke, who were allowed to speak extra, could you make sure you fill out a card and give it to the clerk after you've spoken? Go on, sir.
My name is Curtis Johnson. I live in the Thomas Safran community Delray Square. I am a resident, a formerly homeless resident. I was a manager, actually, at a local car dealership back in 2006 when I had a stroke, which caused my homelessness. I encourage the council to take up this program and, because it's really valuable to the community. Delray Square has become a pillar of that community as a polling place, meeting place, a place that really has affected my life. I have, since becoming a resident at Delray Square, I've become a certified diabetes educator, and I go around actually providing diabetes education workshops in all the Thomas Safran properties here in Los Angeles.
Thank you.
Good morning. My name is George Bennett, and I'm a current resident at the Delray Square Apartments, a Thomas Safran and Associates-owned building. I can speak to the advocacy of placing buildings like that in communities around. I can tell you that where I live, Delray Square is an absolute asset to the community there. The Neighborhood Council meets there. It's a polling place, and I believe that we have been a valuable partner to the community of Delray Square. So in considering this, I would ask that the council favorably consider.
Thank you. Come on up, come on up. This is it.
My name is Joan Reed. I am a resident of Venice. I have actually spent a day, or almost a day, with Mr. Bonn and doing the tours. I want first to emphasize, we are not a NIMBY community. We accept the need to work with the homeless and to provide for them. Our concern is the amount that we are being asked to absorb. The second concern that we have is we are now told that the majority of people that will be housed in what is eventually built will come not from the Venice community, but rather from other areas where there is deemed longer housing inability for these people to be housed. We also ask that when these meetings are held, we not get a 10-hour notice through sources. I think if you are going to be honest about wanting to be transparent, you need to give us notice.
Thank you. All right, that concludes our public comment for item number one. Mr. Clerk, I think we have a report from the CLA regarding this matter. CAO and CLA, pardon me.
Actually, Housing, so H-SID wants to come up. Good morning. Yolanda Chavez with the CEO's Office. Before you, it's a transmittal from the Municipal Facilities Committee and the Homeless Strategy Committee related to Strategy 7D in the city's comprehensive homeless strategy, which is the use of public land for affordable housing. As you may recall, back in July, the CEO issued an RFQP for eight city-owned sites, which comprised 12 parcels, to, one, develop an RFQ, or a qualified list, I should say, of developers that could be used to develop affordable housing on city-owned sites, as well as determine whether there were any development strategies that we would be willing to recommend so that H-SID could initiate exclusive negotiating agreements with some of these developers. These sites also represent, as you may recall, the $47 million in this year's budget that was part of the homeless budget. So the goal is to either develop units or sell the land to generate revenue that would then be deposited into the Affordable Housing Trust Fund and be able to develop supportive housing. So that's the goal for this program in terms of this year. We got 49 responses from developers that wanted to be included in the qualified list or on the qualified list. Before you, it's a recommendation to approve a list of 39 development entities that were deemed qualified by the review panel. We're also recommending that five developers or development partnerships that were actually the highest-scoring development strategies for five of the sites be approved to start negotiating agreements with H-SID. We're recommending that two of the sites, that the panel did not deem any of the development strategies worth recommending for these two sites be sold, and that, of course, the revenue from those sales be deposited into the Affordable Housing Trust Fund as approved by a previous council action. We're also recommending that one of the sites in CD8 on Imperial, that you approve us issuing an RFP to the qualified list for a prefab or modular project on that site. I want to say that in terms of the five sites where we're recommending exclusive negotiating agreements, the development strategies that were proposed represent about 500 units, and it's a mix of units. It's a supportive units, affordable units, some workforce and market units. One of the reasons that we are not being specific in our report about the types of units, number of units on each site, is exactly because of what many of the speakers said, right? This is just the beginning phase of this process. H-SID will start negotiating with these development entities. They will start talking to the community about the appropriate site for, or the appropriate project for that site. So that's one of the reasons we're not specific about the number of units or type. So I wanted to make clear that you're not approving contracts, that this is just the beginning phase. What you're approving is, one, a list of qualified, the 39, the list of 39 qualified developers for the list. You're approving that H-SID start negotiating with the five development entities on those five sites. You're approving us to issuing an RFP for one of the sites to the qualified list, and you're approving that GSD start the process to sell two of the sites. So I'll stop there because of time, and of course, if you have any additional questions, I'll defer to my colleague from the CLA and H-SID.
There we go. Hi, Helmi Hiszorik, Assistant General Manager at the Housing and Community Investment Department. And I just want to add that the Housing and Community Investment Department has been part of the process, together with the CAO and CLA, in both putting out the RFQ, RFP, and making the selections on recommending developers, as well as the selections for the sites. We first, we firmly endorse the use of public land for affordable housing. We think it's a very, very important strategy, and we're glad to be working within the city family on this important process. I would add that from the perspective of the Housing Department, the most important issue at this time is the selection of qualified developers, and that is why this was an RFQ. It was a request for qualification, because we know that the projects that are being envisioned will become fully developed through the process of communication within the community. And so the focus has been on selecting developers that not only know how to do community engagement, but also with developers that have a long track record on serving homeless populations and really understand what kind of services need to be on-site. So this is a process that we're very glad to be a part of, and we just want to add our support to this recommendation.
Thank you. Questions from committee members? Mr. Price?
No questions. Just excited that the process is moving forward, this recommendation is moving forward. I think it's an interesting list of developers, and I guess you're going to just continue going out to them on projects. You're not identifying individual developers for sites yet either, right?
Right. So going forward, the CAO Asset Management Team, together with the CLA, will continue to assess any properties that you direct us to assess, and if they are deemed appropriate for housing, then we will, then H-SID will take the lead in terms of issuing the RFP to this qualified list.
And those projects where we know that there needs to be supportive services, again, that's going to be a requirement of the developer to make sure that occurs, or what's the, how's that process going to work?
So all permanent supportive housing projects that are finalized through this process would include supportive services. That's the definition of supportive housing. And I just wanted to clarify that for a project to be considered supportive housing, at least 50% of the units have to be supportive. So you can have a project that has 50% affordable units and 50% supportive. I mean, they have to be 50% supportive, and 50% of those have to be reserved for the chronically homeless. So that's the definition of permanent supportive housing.
Okay, great. Well, again, we're excited that it's moving forward and look forward to shovels in the ground and actually projects coming up. So thanks.
Excellent. Thank you, Mr. Price, Mr. Bonn and.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you to CAO, CLA, Housing Department for your work on this. As some of the speakers indicated, moving forward with using government-owned property to help build housing for the homeless or affordable housing is a huge cornerstone of the city and the county's strategy for dealing with homelessness. When we did our strategies, which were approved in February, I think both the county and the city did a good job assessing where it was contributing to homelessness. And on the county's end, they realized that people exiting foster care, or jails, or hospitals were very likely to be in a pipeline to homelessness, and that they thought it was appropriate to work to correct that. And on our end, we identified that we're not providing enough housing in the city of Los Angeles, affordable housing or housing for people who are homeless. And the best way we could do to make it pencil out, particularly in expensive areas, is to put city property up so that that land cost isn't part of the equation. So it's a good strategy, and I've been proud and pleased to be part of the first.
Please don't disrupt the meeting like that again. Don't, don't do it.
And I've been proud and pleased to be part of the first wave of it, and I look forward, and I want people to hear this, to the subsequent waves, because the CAO and the CLA are going to be looking at properties throughout the city of Los Angeles, and this is just the first wave of properties that are going to be under consideration. I also want to thank the folks who came down to testify today on both sides. Venice is a community that has very strong opinions, and this is an issue where there certainly should be strong opinions, because it's an important issue. Very happy that Triple H passed here in Los Angeles. It passed by enormous margins in Venice. Got a majority everywhere, well over 2/3 in most areas, 80% in the precincts from many of the speakers here today. What I want to make clear to anybody here today is that what we are doing here today is not, we are not, not approving any projects today. We are not approving any projects today. I personally have not seen a proposal for any of the properties, not seen a single proposal. And I am very pleased at the selection of the developers who are going to be given an opportunity to go out to the community and talk, and then come up with a proposal, because that's what this is about today, is we're saying, here is a developer who is given an opportunity to go out and try to talk with the community and come up with a proposal. And so, as I have said in writing, as I have said in social media, let me say it directly to the developers, to TSA, to VCHC, and to Hollywood Community Housing, do not propose anything. Do not come forward to me, do not file anything until you have gone out and talked with the community. That is the first ask of you. And I'm very pleased that Thomas Safran and Associates and VCHC and Hollywood Community Housing have been chosen, because they do great community outreach, and they do great community engagement, and they do great projects. Let me also say, and I look forward to that process, I want to make a change to your recommendations. I noticed that you've recommended that we auction off the property in Westchester, and I understand your analysis. I understand your analysis, that the property is just too small and a project doesn't pencil out there. I understand that. But yesterday, we were celebrating the 75th birthday of Westchester in council, and I was talking about the different civic organizations, and I just, I happened to mention, and I thought of it this morning on the way in, all of the projects that the various vertories in Westchester do every year to do a Habitat for Humanity project. And that property could certainly accommodate something, it's small, but it could accommodate something Habitat for Humanity does. I believe Habitat for Humanity is on our pre-approved list. So what I'd like to ask is an amendment to the recommendations today, is that we remove that property from the auction list, and we explore whether or not Habitat for Humanity or something would be a suitable way to proceed on that.
So would you want us to issue an RFP on that site as well for maybe affordable single-family?
Potentially. I think, let's remove it from the auction list and then figure out what the best way is to go forward on that. And then I had two questions. One is, we're with this action, if the council approves it, approving an exclusive negotiating agreement. If during that process, what's the length of time for the ENA? Is it three years, five years?
Typically, an exclusive negotiating agreement is about one year.
Okay. So you're going to need a longer agreement in Venice? One, because you're in the coastal zone, and the process, the public process for this, and I want everybody to hear this, is go out and talk to the community, then come up with your proposal. That's going to take a few months, for sure. That's going to take a few months, for sure. Because the proposals may be very different than what people had in mind. Then you have to submit your plan. Then you have to go to the planning committee of the neighborhood council and the full neighborhood council. And then you have to go through the city process. And you almost certainly, because almost anything in Venice would be appealed to the Coastal Commission, have to go to the California Coastal Commission. So there are multiple levels of public input, but it certainly, there's nothing that's ever been built in a year in Venice.
I, well, to be clear, exclusive negotiating agreement is merely an, an opportunity to negotiate a conceptual plan, after which we enter into a development agreement, but we can lengthen the time from one year if that's, if that's needed.
And if, if during the, the term of the exclusive negotiating agreement just becomes clear to everybody that, that a project isn't going to work here, does the city have the ability to pull out?
Yes, that's exactly the purpose of not entering into a development agreement, but to have a period of time to negotiate.
Right, okay.
The, the recommendation, Councilman, is for 90 days, for housing to come back in 90 days with the status of where we are with either the ENA or the DDA. That will give us a better chance to see then what the entire length of the project will take.
Can you say what ENA and DDA are? Sorry.
Yeah, ENA is Exclusive Negotiating Agreement. That's the direct negotiating period. And the DDA is a Disposition and Development Agreement. So that is the agreement where we dispose of the property and develop, and have a development agreement.
The final question is, as I said, I have not, I've not seen any of the proposals. I've heard some stuff on social media about some of them, but we live in a world of fake news, so I don't believe everything I read on social media. I have heard that there is the potential for a significant amount of market rate housing on some of these properties. And I don't know if that's true or not. We're not at that phase yet. Nobody has proposed anything yet, so I guess it's not a completely urgent concern. But let me just say this. That's very concerning to me, that we would have gone through this process, that we would have come up with a strategy to deal with homelessness in the city of Los Angeles and that we would turn around and take our most valuable asset to help us address homelessness and use it for market rate housing. And on the west side, market rate housing is effectively now luxury housing. I'm not going to be favorably inclined at all towards using any properties for that. That, that just doesn't make, it, it doesn't make sense. There's a purpose for using these properties to achieve a policy end and if we start watering that down by making it available for any types of housing, then it, it just doesn't make any sense.
So if I could just, yes, if I could just respond. So one of our sites was a very unique site in that there were five lots that are very close together. And it was important that, because they were so close together, it was very challenging for anyone to develop five supportive housing projects on that. And so, in fact, the, it was encouraged that if the developer was going to come forward with a development strategy for the five lots, that they, that they really proposed a mixed income community along with replacement parking. So in those situations, I mean, there were some unique situations and there may be just some land, as you said, that is probably more appropriate for single family, that could be affordable and others. So we wanted to have that flexibility, especially in the list of qualified developers. So depending on the site, we had the qualified developers that could develop the type of housing that was appropriate for that site.
I understand that. The thing I just want to be careful of is, is after Triple H is approved, after going through this whole process of saying we want to address homelessness is, I, I don't want us to have a bait and switch where all of a sudden valuable city property is being used to, to, to help developers who are not affordable housing developers build market rate housing. That would be wrong. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Bonn. And I will cut my question short so we can move to a vote. I think we've got a handful of minutes here. I just want to, one, thank everybody who came out, especially folks who came out from Venice to get here early this morning. We had to call a special meeting to meet some deadlines. So typically, our notice would be a lot more, so we appreciate your, we appreciate your concern about that and I also appreciate you being here on both sides of the issue. I also want to thank all of the staff who've been working on this for close to a year now, pulling it together and dealing with the changes and ins and outs of both the material conditions in the communities, but also in the various council offices and things that we hear in the community. I, I know we have some long, hard phone calls with you all at different points in times and you all have rolled with it and got a proposal in front of us, so we appreciate you for that. I also want to give special appreciation to my colleague, Mike Bonn. And as someone who represents South LA, you open up the newspaper and you read the editorial section, why should any poor people get to live in Venice or any other wealthy community? Let's just sell the land and move them all to another part of town. What's unspoken is that that means our part of town. And we already, we already have a tremendously disproportionate share of affordable and subsidized housing, both for seniors, for homeless people, for foster care, for every category that there is. And that doesn't mean we won't accept more, we absolutely will. We have a proposal in CD eight on the table that'll be, that'll have high density and, and provide a lot more units, but it is really appreciate, I really appreciate living in a city where people with more power and people with more wealth don't say, we're going to just shove the problems over to the people with less power and less wealth. So I, I thank Mr. Bonn and, and all the supporters in the community that, that Los Angeles isn't that kind of city. So that's my piece. I don't know if it's a question, it probably isn't. If not, Mr. Clerk, we'll go ahead and call the vote on, as amended, if you can read what's before us.
Yeah, what's before us? The, the joint report relative to the, the eight city-owned properties. Right now, just for clarification, we're approving the report with the amendment of Councilmember Bonn to take out one of the.
Excellent. Yes, sir.
And I just wanted to mention, if I could, I wanted to also thank the Planning Department because they were part of the panel and they've been extremely helpful, as well as the County CAO's Housing Initiative, who was also part of the panel.
All right, hearing no objection, this, this item will be adopted. Thank you, Mr. Clerk. Can you read item number two?
Yes, sir. Item number, number two is a CAO and CLA joint report relative to the framework for the Safe Parking Pilot Program. We do not have any cards on this item.
Thank you. So with no public comment on this matter, we have a report and presentation by the CAO and CLA. We'll get that underway right now. Thank you.
Good morning, Steve Liu with the CLA.
Jason Kline with the Office of the City Administrative Officer.
I'm Chris Calandrello, Director of Programs at the LA Homeless Service.
Can we ask folks to try to keep it down as they're exiting the, the room? We've still got another important report here. Thank you.
Before you today is a joint report from the Office of the City Administrative Officer and the Chief Legislative Analyst that presents the framework for establishing an 18-month pilot program for the safe parking within the city of Los Angeles, which would allow for homeless individuals and families who currently reside in their vehicles to do so legally in designated parking lots within the city. The 1617 adopted homeless budget included an appropriation of $770,198 to establish the Safe Parking Pilot Program to provide mobile showers for the homeless. The program would provide homeless individuals the opportunity to enroll in case management and receive social services, which may lead to long-term housing. Additionally, this report provides an overview of the program elements that the council would need to consider when creating a pilot program. Before you today, I know there's a bunch of questions as to how this program relates to LA Municipal Code 8502. In the original report to the Strategic Committee, we discussed linking the two items together, you know, utilizing the city's immense street segment structure, which is largest in the nation, and then linking that up with parking lots. There was a decision made to bifurcate the two. The council and mayor recently adopted the revised LAMC 8502, which will go into effect in January 2007, or January 7th, 2017, which will allow vehicular dwelling in most areas of the city between 6:00 AM and 9:00 PM and will allow vehicular dwelling in non-residential areas of the city between 9:00 PM and 6:00 AM. So that's kind of the first piece for, you know, building a comprehensive framework for helping to address the vehicular dwelling population with the city, link them up with services and then get them into permanent housing. The outreach program that Lawson will be proposing is actually not only going to be looking at individuals who are in the lots, but it's also looking at individuals that are in street segments. What this will do, which will give the city an idea of what this population looks like. When we researched San Diego and Santa Barbara, the majority of these individuals are the working poor. 95% of the individuals in Santa Barbara's program are very low-income based on HUD standards. So they have an income, they have jobs, they have somewhere to go during the day, they just can't afford to live in the cities where they reside. So they have to, you know, ultimately live in their vehicle. So to the extent possible that we can assist them in getting to permanent housing that they can actually afford, it will go a long way in helping them get there. As part of this program, since we haven't done a lot of outreach previously, we do need to go out there, meet with these individuals, find out what their current needs are, see what their acuity score is and see how we can best service them. So starting in January as part of the 8502 rollout, the ERT teams, the HOPE teams will be helping identify areas of the city where people can lawfully vehicular dwell outside of the parking lots. And then as we move forward with lot identification, doing targeted outreach in and around where the lots are identified, so that the individuals that are in those neighborhoods currently get the first opportunity to get those spots in those lots, to minimize community impacts because those individuals are already living in those communities. And once we, you know, get people moved into the parking lots, it will give us a better opportunity to link them up with case management and ongoing housing navigation and then hopefully leverage some of the, the benefits of the temporary shelter programs, some of the Meals on Wheels programs, animal services programs that we have rolling out as part of the comprehensive strategy.
In terms of the size and capacity of the pilot program, after much discussion with our colleagues at Lawson, city staff, it looks like we're going to be proposing a pilot program of the size of 25 to 50 vehicles, mainly due to the capacity of the service providers. My colleague, Chris, can add more if he feels is necessary, but there still needs to be a ramp-up period, as Jason said, for us to do targeted outreach to really understand this population for one and for two, identifying these public and private lots. As many of us know, there is a limited capacity in terms of lots that we can use and there is a very long process. But the quickest way to get this forward is to really engage with our faith-based organizations and our private organizations that are willing to let their lots go forward. Now, moving forward with that, in order to allow them to do that, we are requesting as a recommendation that the Department of City Planning be instructed to establish, to prepare and report on an enabling ordinance that will allow for a safe parking program that would help allow for some of these faith-based organizations and private organizations to be, to use their lots without any repercussions in the future.
Does that complete your report? Thank you.
Mr. for questions?
All right, we'll try to make sure we have a question for you, Mr. Bonn.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you for the presentation. As folks know, I've been trying to get a program like this established since before I was elected, when I worked for Mr. Rosendahl. So I think we're going on five or six years. So I'm ecstatic that we're at this moment where we actually seem to be making some progress and I am mostly okay with the actual recommendations in the report, but I remain frustrated and impatient and disappointed with a, a lot of sort of what's in the, the body of the report. You know, I'm glad we're asking planning to do, or asking planning to do. Honest to God, I think the council has done that like three, four, maybe five times in the past couple of years. Hopefully, we'll get it done this time. But what concerns me is the size of the proposed pilot program, how I just heard you discuss structuring it and this continued focus on the, the need for outreach before we decide what to do. As I said at our last committee meeting, we're in a crisis and I, I remain frustrated by, by, by this, this culture of analysis over action. And we need to act and we need to get this moving. I don't think the, the, the purpose and the focus of the safe parking program should be to survey and get an acuity score for everybody who's living in a vehicle. That's the point of everything else we're doing in the city. We gave more millions than, than I was wild about to building out the CES system. The, the spas, the service providers, everybody who's out there, their job is to get everybody into the coordinated entry system and, and the acuity score. This should be simply about the, the safe parking program. And I, I've heard talk, and you sort of alluded to it, about the, the capacity of the, the service providers. My, my, my sense is that LSA is not all that wild about the safe parking program or isn't, isn't fully equipped to do the safe parking program. Some of the service providers may be the same way. I don't think this is something that should just be handed off to each lead agency in a spa and say, go do this, we're, we're putting this on top of everything else we've asked you to do. I think what we've been discussing for a couple of years now is a model sort of like in Santa Barbara, where we hire an agency that does it. And maybe it's more akin to how we operate the winter shelter program, where we hire some agencies whose job is exclusively to, to, to do this. So my third thought on that is initially, I know we, we tried to, how can we create a safe parking program that serves 4,000 vehicles? That was too big. I think 25 as a pilot for 18 months is too small and I think there's something Goldilocks in between. What I would suggest is maybe let's start with 50 for a six-month pilot and then discuss more at six months and, and see where we are. But in terms of the actual recommendations that you, you gave us today, I'm, I'm mostly cool with the actual procedural recommendations of instructing planning to do this and get the ordinance going and, and stuff like that, but I just, I, I'm concerned about everything I heard that isn't specific to the recommendations. Would you care to respond?
Yeah. We apologize for not providing additional clarity in the report. The intent of the 25 to 50-vehicle recommendation would carry us through June 30th of 2016. So LSA has already submitted their proposed budget for 1718, asking for additional resources to supplement the existing appropriation for safe parking pilot program. We've already worked with them on multiple budget scenarios for how we can leverage different service types to basically find the maximum utility for different types of lots. So we know based on other programs that some of these lots could operate with very minimal services where people don't need a ton of case management services, they just need minimal housing navigation, plus they need a safe park to stay overnight. That kind of lot will probably cost about $4,500 to $6,000 per vehicle per year. However, lots where we are actually going to be providing the full range of services, housing navigation, lot monitors, case services, those will probably cost about $10,000 per vehicle per year. That's less than the, the average annual cost for one shelter bed. So instead of being about $30 a day, which is a shelter program, safe parking will cost less than $25 a day for each vehicle. So we want to provide you a robust options in terms of how we move forward and how we identify lots and who actually goes in those lots because we'll get the most bang for our buck by putting like-minded individuals in the same parking lot so that we can leverage the existing resources. So that really 25 to 50 vehicles is just through the rain or the So that really twenty-five to fifty vehicles is just through the remainder of this fiscal year, and then we anticipate there's going to be ongoing discussion as to how that program expands over the full eighteen months of the pilot program. The second piece of it is trying to minimize the community impact, which is why we are saying outreach, is to actually go in and find out what services these individuals need, and then link them up with parking lots in and around the areas where they currently exist, because in Santa Barbara and San Diego, what we see is a lot of these are the working poor who have jobs in those neighborhoods, so they're not going to want to move to another council district or another area of the city and then have to commute into those areas.
Don't we have a lot of that info already? I mean, if we're talking about only doing, you know, fifty, I say fifty, you say twenty-five in the first six months, you know, some of the agencies that came here to testify today, whether it's VCHC or SPY, they have clients that they're already serving and trying to help who are living in vehicles. So isn't it easier to just start using those folks as the first people we put into the program?
As part of the procurement process, I believe the intent is to identify, going through the formal procurement process, assuming that the same range of service providers are most likely going to help participate in the city's program, they'll have that information that will help assist us in actually identifying people to utilize those parking lots.
What are we procuring?
So similar to what you were saying with the San Diego and Santa Barbara model, is actually finding an agency or a service provider to manage each of those lots. So because the city is so large, it's unlikely that one agency or one service provider is actually going to be able to manage all the lots throughout the city. Most likely, we'll have a service provider, an agency managing the lots that are in each spa area.
Okay. The only small change I'd ask is that in your recommendations, item three, which says, prepare your final recommendations for programmatic rules and regulations, is that it be programmatic rules and regulations and also resources, including vouchers? Because I think we need to know what the resources are. It's not about just sort of warehousing somebody in a different space, it's about getting them into housing. Thank you.
All right, we're at time, although I think there's a lot more discussion on this. I want to echo Mr. Bonn's concern about the time and analysis that it takes. You know, just from a layperson's perspective, this is true in my district, I think it's true in all of the city, lots of churches consider it their free exercise of religion to help poor people. I think all the major religions have that as a tenet. We want to help poor people, we have a parking lot, there are people parked on the street. Like, it doesn't seem that complicated, and so, to the extent that we can move it in a way that is, one, simpler, but, two, lets us see the light at the end of the tunnel, I think is helpful.
To your point, sir, we've been working with the city planning department, and we are preparing a draft ordinance to present to the city planning commission early next year. The expectation is that the city planning commission will act on that report and then transmit to the council for consideration. The goal would be to work with the chair of the Planning and Land Use Management Committee to get it scheduled as soon as possible, and then get it back into your committee for final consideration, but we are proactively working on that. And the intent of that ordinance is to give people relief from zoning and land use restrictions that may prohibit them from using their lots, to actually assist these individuals, and we did see that legally challenged in San Diego, and it shut down their program, and they had to go back. So we want to avoid doing that.
Thank you. Mr. Price?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just an afterthought, I do agree that we want to speed things up and really start delivering services as soon as possible, and you're absolutely right. In my district as well, we have churches that are already doing feeding programs, churches that are already doing housing programs, churches that are already letting folks park, you know, and so to be able to formalize it, I think, and quickly, will bring them in, but we don't have to recruit folks to figure out who can benefit from these services. I think we should really try to do it as quickly as we can.
Yes, sir.
Hi. So I just want to ensure you that LASSA is committed to this, that we are working every day, we have staff working every day on this. To that end, the procurement that's talked about is their simplest type of procurement. It's simply a request for information from agencies that are interested. We're intending to release that RFI at the end of this month, and it'll be open for about a month. So regardless of the technicalities of the council process, we are ready to move forward and to start that immediately.
Excellent. Thank you. If there are no other questions, Mr. Clerk will continue this matter until a date unknown. And is there anything else?
That clears the desk, sir.
Excellent, then we are adjourned.